Good evening and welcome to the Akron School Board of Education's Public Meeting Held September 22, 2025 at 5:30 PM. Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Audrey.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Reverend Harrison.
Present.
Dr. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
All present, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Vice President Alexander, could you please lead us as those who are able to stand stands for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. I am not aware of, let's see, any recognitions on today or scholar number of voices? Are there any recognition superintendent? Okay. At this time, I'll defer to the superintendent for recognitions. Okay, Member Hall?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to discuss the Thomas Edison Award. The Governor Thomas Edison Award was established in 1985 under former Governor Richard Celeste's administration. The Governor, the Governor Thomas Edison Award for Excellence in Student Research and STEM Education are presented to Ohio students, schools, and teachers who extend STEM education beyond traditional classroom activities. I will now turn it over to Dr. Halasa.
Thank you, Board Member, Ms. Summer Hall, Superintendent Ottley, President Dr. Jackson, and all Board members for allowing me to speak about this wonderful prestigious STEM Governor's Award for the Akron Public School System. In, I want to start by telling you how we got here real quick. We started with one school at Firestone High School, nine teachers in 2002. And currently, we are at 2025 with 196 school awards and 3,6473 total teachers till 2025. What makes this award so amazing for this year is that we actually have all our schools, 40 of them, being represented. And what you can see on this slide is the number of times that a school has been receiving the award, and you could see this is a first time for many of our elementary schools. So, we have over 40 schools, over 857 K-12 teachers were recognized throughout the district. I'm going to briefly describe how we got here. So, the criteria for the school teachers' award starts with a local conduct, a local fair with 12 or more students. So, we do this in Akron by having all 7th grade create a presentation, and, and that's around 1,500. Some of our high schools require this course, which is 133, and some did a summer research internship at the University of Akron, which counted for 45. 5th graders and teachers in the elementary school recruited six or more of 158 elementary students participated this year. In our own fair, 194, and you can see how many got superior, excellent, and good. The second criteria is going to District Day. We had 304 scholars that participated in the Regional Science Day, whether it was physically at Kent State or virtually at a district fair. We normally have only 50. So, imagine 304 this year, and normally, we have 50. That also produced 90 scholars to participate in our State Science Day, and 27 of them got superiors today. In addition, the third criteria is that you have to have a school work on doing something outside with STEM. And as you can see, we have all these things, whether our community partners, CCA, gifted and talented, K-12 teachers, they take them beyond the classroom. And so, we're generously thankful for our community members being able to support us. So, today, I would be my pleasure to introduce my friend and the Executive Director of the Ohio Academy of Science, Voick, Mike, Mr. Mike Voitek. He is appointed the, to the full mission of the Ohio's leading organization to advance understanding and practice of science and technology, engineering, and math. Michael is responsible, including reading, leading, directing, funding, budgeting, all programs that serve OAS members and strategic stakeholders. These activities include professional symposiums, publications, and the Ohio Journal of Science, and create a pre-college STEM-to-STEM-based entrepreneur programs. Prior to joining OAE, Michael's career spanned for more than 30 years in finance, services, and professional and entrepreneur. He is a lifelong Ohioan. Michael graduated his bachelor's from Youngstown State, then he got his MBA from Cleveland State, and it is my honor to introduce my friend, Michael Voitek, for the OAS.
Thank you so much. It is really my pleasure, Superintendent Ottley, President Dr. Carla Jackson, members of the board. We have been recognizing schools and teachers since 1985 through this award that has been supported through the, by the Ohio Department of Development. The Governor's Thomas Edison Award for, for STEM education and student research. So, why do we do this? And, and who are we? We've been doing experiential learning opportunities for students through science and giving students an authentic, genuine opportunity, student-driven opportunities for them to pursue their own curiosity, for them to discover, and for them to innovate by actually applying what they're learning, right? Why do we need to learn this stuff anyhow? Akron happens to do it as well, if not better than any school district in the state. Think about this. 14, 1,400 students. I mean, these are programs of rigor. Students are writing 250-word abstracts, they're submitting a complete research plan into a final report, they're making a visual presentation, they're standing in front of a professional practitioner, a professional from the field, and they're, they're going over the results, right? What they've, what they were able to, you know, what they were able to learn, the questions they were able to ask and answer, and how they were able to apply this material. We get a lot of feedback from students, and they'll tell us that component of standing in front of, you know, that judge and presenting. It is something that makes them stronger, something that makes them resilient, adaptable, and framing, you know, a persuasive presentation, a persuasive argument is something that serves them well. We would love to see them pursue science and engineering as a profession. We realize they're not all going to take that particular pathway, but the durable skills that they're learning, and this isn't just about awareness, this isn't just about, you know, you know, a brief engagement or a one-day thing. Many of these students start their projects in the summer, they continue them through the fall, and when they start presenting them in February and March. We're glad to see them. We currently engage over 400 schools a year from more than 70 different counties. So, I have context, right? And I could tell you what a, what a fabulous job that Akron's doing. Please continue to support this. It is very important for the state of Ohio. It's important for the students' futures as well. In our news release, we have all the schools listed. I do have proclamations from Governor Dewine and Lieutenant Governor Tressel. We have all the teachers listed, the principals, but somehow, there was a big omission. I don't have Dr. Halasa mentioned. So, we don't have any particular reason for that. It's just that we only list the schools, the principals, and the teachers. But it wouldn't happen without her. So, this is my recognition. It is the 2025 STEM champion from the Ohio Academy of Science, and it recognizes Dr. Katrina Halasa, Akron Public Schools. I also requested somebody to come with me. I have with us today Dr. Allen, who is the Deputy Director from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Dr. Diane Allen is new to the position. She was recently appointed in July of 2025. Previous to that, she was the Superintendent of Marysville School District. She has a few things she would like to say as well. Dr. Allen.
Well, thanks for having me. I, I am going to be honest, after retiring of 13 years of being a superintendent, I was really trying to avoid board meetings in my future, but so happy to be here tonight and celebrate with all of you and the great work taking place here. Forty schools. So, when I look at that list and I see the change, we did a STEM school in my district, I know what that means for kids. So, well done. I couldn't be more proud of the two young ladies I got to hear tonight talk to me about their project and their excitement. We all know lessons in life are more valuable when we fail, right? Those are the biggest lessons in life that we take away. So, listening to them about what went wrong and what they tried to change and correct are those valuable workforce skills that we need in our students today. So, I'm totally off-script, so I apologize for that, but as we are dedicated to creating those life experiences where kids are connecting to the community, we all know it takes a village. All of you, all the teacher champions, your community partners. So, I just want to say, this is the exemplar. This is what we're looking for. Couldn't be more proud. I can't wait to hire a couple of kids that are setting out here in this crowd because you are preparing tomorrow's workforce, and they are honestly, they're rocking it. So, couldn't be more proud to be here tonight. Congratulations to you all. Should be a great celebration. Thanks for including me.
And I would just like to take a minute to give a small award to our young people, so they'll come up as they're coming up behind me. So, Amara Douglas and Amelia Esquie, which by the way, her father was one of my students at North High School. So, now we've come back to the turn of Halasa teaching other, your kids' kids. Yeah, so let's hope it doesn't go to grandchildren like Mr. Herschek. We also want to recognize Rosa Bella Morris, please come up as well to the podium. With also, I'll also address that in a minute, and she would please come to the podium. She also took over $500 at Best Medicine for her invention. And then finally, Anisa McShane, who was part of our program. I'd like to include a couple adults with that. So, Dr. Nadab Mackey, the Vice President of the Provost in Academics, please come up. She is part of the reason why we have our partnership with Akron, Akron U. And Karen Collins, who's representing Case, who took the kids all the way to State where they got their superior. Please come forward. Also, I do want to say for our, our special guest, thank you for coming today. We do have a gift for you as well. And then, I just want to recognize, this would never happen without the people that are, notice how I am slowly making it work. This would not happen without, special thanks to the 5th grade teachers who recommended their work directly either with the scholars or with our team. I'd like our team, who's behind me, to stand up. They're in the fourth row. They're the ones that coached the 5th grade scholars, projects, registered the 304, assured that the paperwork went well. If it wasn't for my team, because remember, it's a we, not a me. I want to recognize Keith Lechtie and the OSI coaches who helped drive the application and help our principals. I want CCA, Marcy Ebride, for those STEM-related experiences, and also OSI for paying for the actual registration. It's $30 per person or $60 to go to State. So, it's not inexpensive. It's expensive to send our kids to do those things besides all the chaperones and the buses that we do. But all of this would have not happened without Mary Ann Promovic. And so, if she could please rise to the. That's a great picture. That's a great picture. So, with a lot of gratitude and thanks to everything you do, thank you. Because when Shai said, hey, let's get all elementary schools to do this, let's do the Governor's Award, and she looked at me, and she's like, sure, Halasa. And then, when it came down to like December, January, she looked at me, and she's like, are we going to make it? I go, of course we are. So, she was naive enough to be my coach last year, the chosen one, as we say once in a while. And so, she is the reason that all those applications got done and streamlined. If it wasn't for her hard work and persistence, we would have not had this today. Again, our printing service, we have at every school a poster with an easel, so you will be seeing it. The coaches took it this morning, so you should be seeing it at our schools, posted everywhere in the office. And thanks to Printing for doing that. And in 49 languages in the Akron Public Schools, I would like to say thank you and allowing me to lead our young people. By the way, you all have lemonade, because we don't make lemons in APS, we make lemonade.
Excellent job. Again, thank you all for your hard work and everything that you do. Currently, we did have some, one more recognition.
Very quickly, this summer, Akron Public Schools launched the Summer Reading Adventure Contest, designed to help our rising kindergarten through 4th grade students stay engaged in learning while away from school. This initiative encouraged students to compete with some fun activities during their summer, engaging in workbooks, and to bring the workbooks back at the start of the school year. So, I have the honor to recognize the winning school this evening, and that is Windermere CLC. If Principal Megan Lee Wilfong is present, would you please stand and be recognized? Windermere had the highest participation rate across the district, thanks to our valued partnerships with Scholastics. Students' participation at Windermere was at a record high. And Windermere will enjoy now a special pop-up bookstore right at their own school, where every student will have the chance to pick out a free book to keep. So, congratulations. That does conclude the recognitions.
Thank you. One, one second here. Thank you for that. And we have our signed up, before we go with our student scholar voice, which I'll take this time to use that for you, because you are a student scholar. And then, I'll go on to those who want to address the board. So, go ahead, dear heart, coming from Garfield CLC.
Hi, my name is Anisa. I have a project out there. It's called Stop That Spoilage. But the reason I'm on the mic today is to thank Dr. Halasa for everything that she's done for me and given me this opportunity. I'm very grateful to be up here, see all of you, and be able to help the community. And like someone said before me, the way that we learn is failure. And if you don't fail it, you won't learn how to do it right. So, I want to say thank you to whoever said that before, before me. And I want to say thank you to all of y'all.
Well, thank you. Let's get around. And I think she wants to go to school to be an attorney. So, let's be looking for her in the future. Thank you so much, dear heart. Now, we do have one request to address the board. And while Kim Patton gets ready, I'm just going to read our preamble. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, thank you so much, but will assign through the superintendent their appropriate person for follow-up. Please, again, state your name and your group affiliation. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Kim Patton, and I'm the Associate Director of Clinical Services at the County of Summit Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Services Board. I'm here this evening to talk to you all on behalf of our levy that will be on the ballot this coming November. So, the County of Summit ADM Board has a statutory responsibility to plan, fund, and monitor mental health and addiction services for Summit County residents. And while we do not provide direct services, we do provide funding for local agencies that provide crisis treatment and school-based services. Several of the providers that we do support are in the Akron Public Schools. And some of those agencies that we do provide funding to are Akron Umidah, Minority Behavioral Health Group, Greenleaf Family Services, Rod Oak Behavioral Health, Child Guidance and Family Services, Aja, CHC Addiction Services, Alliance for Healthy Youth, Ohio Guidestone, and Urban Ounce of Prevention Services and Behavioral Health. We ensure that services are available to Summit County residents regardless of their insurance status. And we also provide support for critical programs such as Crisis Center, Detox, 988, Summit County Outreach Team, and Crisis Intervention Training, which is training for emergency service responders, where they learn to identify and how to respond to mental health crises. And we most recently in August had a youth CIT training, which is the first of its kind, and we're already planning to have another one. Our current levy generates about $36 million per year, and in 2024, the levy accounted for about 77% of our total income. And about 93% of that goes directly into direct contracts and services. The ADM Board is on the ballot in November as Issue 1, and we're asking here this evening for formal endorsement and support. The ADM Board has not asked voters for an increase in 18 years. And in this November, we are asking for a renewal with a slight increase for, to 3.45 millage. And what that means is it will cost a homeowner of $100,000 home $6.25 per month, or $75 per year. The ADM Board believes that mental health is health care, and with your support, we can continue to serve our community members when they're at their most vulnerable. Thank you. And then also in your packet, you have our most recent resource guide and our 2025 tip card. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, we have no more requests to address the board this time. Are there any board member reflections? Member Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. It's not really a reflection, but with the ADM Board, I know that I was in a presentation with their numbers that they provided, especially with Akron Public Schools. So, I want to make sure that we are getting that data, because it shows students that, you know, may have passed away due to suicide, or guns, or things like that, as well as bullying and all of that information too. So, it'd be great if we can get that information to better service our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. Are there any other board member, community reflections? Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. I missed our last meeting because I was in Washington DC, but it was a wonderful opportunity. I really enjoy and appreciate the ability to represent our district and learn more about how to be an effective advocate for our students, for our families, to talk to our representatives, and also talk to other educational leaders and policy advocates. So, this really helps us share challenges and also compare our goals, work together, and discover new ways to support our communities. So, I love going there and telling people what we need, but what I love even more is coming back with information that can help us right here, right now. And so, that's what I'm going to try to do right now, because one topic from my recent trip was a discussion on Medicaid. And so, as many people know, recent changes have caused adults to lose coverage, but what isn't widely known is that children often still qualify even when their parents don't. And this matters deeply to us as a school district. One, it affects our ability to receive reimbursements for services like physical therapy, but much more importantly, when our children have access to health services, they're healthier, they learn better. Maslow before Bloom, they're more likely to succeed in school. So, I am not by any means an expert on Medicaid. I basically just told you 100% of what I know so far. But a recommendation from the other district leaders was for us at APS to leverage our family resource centers, where people do know much more than I do about this, and they can directly help students and families and other community members too. So, we have interim conferences happening this week. We're going to have people in the buildings. And so, while you're there visiting your teachers, it might be a good idea to stop by the Family Resource Center. But it's also a good time for us to remind families that not all of our buildings have family resource centers. So, you can go to a building that does. Just because your building doesn't have one does not mean that you cannot visit one and get help and services and information from one. And you don't even have to be an APS student or an APS family. The Family Resources Center is there for the community. So, my call to action for this week, I have 40 seconds left, is to encourage families, for us as a district, to encourage families to connect with opportunities available through our family resource centers, and to strengthen support for all Akron children, right? We often say, "We're here for the kids." So, I'm taking this moment to share this message publicly, hoping it's going to reach others and snowball out. And if any of us have connections to our other roles and networks, even private schools, even charter schools, those students are encouraged to come to our buildings, come to our family resource centers, and feel invited and supported with resources. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Molinar. Are there any other board member reflections? Vice President Alexander, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, first of all, I wanted to thank Dr. Halasa for the work that she's done with our students. Thank our students for the hard work that they did to achieve the goals that they did. This is what, to me, is what it's all about, our students achieving, our staff being able to give to the students so they can thrive and so they can achieve, and so they can meet those milestones they need to make sure they were, they will be good individuals for the future. So, I want to thank Dr. Halasa again, and thank her team, as well as all the students. Because I love things like this here, because this, to me, is what makes every district work. Second of all, I wanted to say, I was able to attend the Fathers Walk last week at Case Elementary School. And, you know, we always say, a lot of times, there's a lot of fathers that are missing in the lives of some of our kids. And during that walk, I saw a lot of fathers, you know, a lot of fathers who were there. And when the fathers were not there, there were the grandfathers there. So, they had a adult, male adult with them during that day. It was very exciting. The kids were excited, the parents were excited. Krispy Kreme, you know, gave a lot of donuts throughout the city to give to the students, as well as the grandparents and the parents. So, that's always good to see that we have our fathers who are involved in the lives of their kids. And if not their fathers, they do have a male individual who's involved their lives. And lastly, this was something that's really, I guess, kind of close to me, because one of my teachers, when I was in the first grade, and I don't forget her, she was one of my neighbors as well, Marilyn Walker. And she was someone who cared about education, who talked about reading and making sure she instilled in us reading and learning. And on September the 27th, there's going to be a program at Patterson Park, it's called a Brick Painting Experience. And that is at Patterson Park, again, 800 Patterson Avenue. And they want people to come, and it's a $40 donation. It'll include a meal and materials. And this is to raise money for books for kids. And so, this is dear to me, because she, Mrs. Walker, was one of my teachers and really poured into us. And so, I want anyone who's out there who would like to attend, please attend this event. This will be on September the 27th at Patterson Park at 6:00 PM. Patterson Park Community Center at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Member Autry?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, just wanted to acknowledge the Fathers Walk. I saw a lot of amazing photos, all age groups, not just elementary and middle school, and just thanking the 100 black men and the Akron firefighters who also participated, just to have that male presence. Also, piggybacking on Dr. Molinar, thanking the district for the opportunity to attend the Federal Advocacy Conference in DC at this last meeting. Since we met, well, since I was last here, actually, I had the opportunity to attend the Early Learning Program classes at Barber, King, Reimer, and Helen Arnold, to read to them for the International DOT Day, which is based on a story about a teacher who encourages a doubtful student to trust in their own abilities and creativity. And so, later on in the book, we see that same student do the same thing for a peer. And so, as early literacy is one of the areas of focus for us, it was my pleasure to make this small contribution for our learners. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to attend a ward meeting where there was a presentation from Summit County Children's Services Board, Sandy DeLuca. And she shared with us that there is a foster home crisis here in our county, in our city, that 50% of our children are being placed outside of the county, some as far as Cincinnati and Columbus, just due to our lack of foster homes. So, I'm sure some families in our district are affected by this. And so, she was encouraging people to consider becoming trained, and that this is a four to six-month process. Currently, they have 850 young people in custody with only 135 available homes. And so, she also dispelled some myths that you can be a foster home if you're single, if you're a renter, if you have minimal income, as long as it's stable income. And so, certainly, if anyone is considering this, this is certainly in need in our community, please feel free to contact Summit County Children's Services Board. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Autry. Are there any other board member reflections? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the President's Report. I would concur with the things that have been said, especially concerning the Fathers Walk, and just want to appreciate our community village that steps in, especially our faith-based community members, and as Autry said, our firefighters and other organizations that stepped in as stand-ins, so that no student would have to fill along with the absence of a male figure. And so, we're grateful for them as well. Additionally, I would like to speak a little bit about the progress of APS, which I know we're all excited about. Ms. Halasa, we can't thank you enough for the excellence that you do and for building excellent teams around you. Things always seem to work out very well when we allow the experts and the practitioners to do what they do best and to educate students in the spirit of excellence. Here at Akron Public Schools, we have been steadfast in advancing our strategic vision. This vision is outlined in our blueprint for excellence, and as Member Autry has stated, we have priorities in this strategic vision. Some of those priorities include our college and career readiness, our structured literacy, and our multi-tiered systems of support, as well as social-emotional learning. I want to focus on the social-emotional learning piece, because as we just had a presentation by the ADM Board, and also when we recall, as many times as our student advocates or our student board members approached this board, and a lot of the things that they were facing was dealing with their emotional health and their mental capacities as they walked through the halls. Students cannot learn if their mind is not set in a position to learn. If we can put things and systems in our school, and we can support those things to better help our students' social and emotional health, then we can see better outcomes, the outcomes that we say that we desire. We understand that these priorities of the district have already yielded measurable gains in literacy and graduation rates, helping to position our district, Akron Public Schools, as the highest-rated large urban district in Ohio for the 2025 school year, according to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Report Card. We're grateful for that. And while we recognize that continued growth requires consistent implementation at every building, we are taking intentional steps to strengthen instructional fidelity, to reduce teacher turnover, and to expand the reach of our multi-tiered systems of support across all schools. These efforts include discussions and action steps in professional development, in building stronger pipelines to recruitment and to retain high-quality educators, and ensuring that supports and best practices developed at the district level are fully embedded in classrooms. Our progress has been made possible through the hard work and dedication of our teachers, administrators, our support staff, and district departments, along with the unwavering commitment of our families and our community partners. Together, through collaboration, perseverance, and a shared vision, we will continue to close gaps, expand opportunities, and create schools where every student has the resource and support they need to thrive. It is important that we understand we are one APS, and we, in fact, are better together. This week regarding the community engagement, this Sunday, I visited Prince of Peace Baptist Church, and I had the honor of meeting a 2025 Garfield High School graduate, whose name is Wayne Rivers. He shared with me he has enlisted in the Army Reserve, and his excitement about his next steps reflects the strength and promise of our graduates here in Akron Public Schools. I also attended Leadership on Main hosted by Leadership Akron, where the Executive Director and CEO of the Rubber Division of the American Chemical Society, Lakeisha Barclay, shared her inspiring journey of resilience. Following her talk, I connected with her organization about possible initiatives to engage our students in the polymer industry. And I do look forward to meeting with their Training and Outreach Director to explore more opportunities for meaningful student engagement, as was discussed here today with our representatives from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And additionally, one of our students, I believe it was Amelia Eskew, did she do the prosthetic hand?
No, that was Bella Morris.
Bella Morris. So, Bella Morris, if you had a time to look at her project, her project, all I thought about was, this will be so great, that connection with the polymers, because she was talking about how theoretically her, she had a model, she said she created a prototype, and it was made out of all recycled materials. And all I thought about is the expansion of those experiential learning activities with someone like Lakeisha Barclay's organization, getting with our students so they can even dream bigger, think greater. I love how the representative also, Ms. Halasa, said, "It's not just about awareness." And I agree with that, that we don't expose our children to these different opportunities simply for awareness, but for the greater possibilities of what can be and what they can do. And so, again, I was excited about that. I also met with Mr. Robert Brown of Catwick's Design and Bill to discuss additional access points for students interested in architectural design and home-building careers that do not necessarily require a college degree. I believe that these type of partnerships is critical to expanding career options for students who want to enter the workforce directly upon graduating high school. And so, I was very excited to meet with him to discuss those options, because the goal is that when students leave Akron Public Schools, we want them equipped to be contributing citizens into the city of Akron, and not necessarily have to go away or abroad. So, looking for those options is what made me take these additional meetings. I also attended the Grill and Chill. I saw a member here, she's in there as well, as well as multiple board employees. And it was an event at the Summit Lake Nature Center, and it was welcoming back our homeschool gear-up families, which we know financing and things like that is, may cause us some challenging with some cut in financing. But these are very important opportunities, and leveraging our relationships with community partners and surrounding organizations is important and vital, so that we can sustain such programming, regardless of what happens on the federal level, but also agitating that we keep support. This event had resource table, food trucks, and family activities, fishing, salsa, pickle making. And again, it was just wonderful to strengthen our homeschool networks. Lastly, I have an announcement for our families. On Thursday, October 23rd at 7:00 PM, Parents United for Public Schools will host a virtual statewide meeting called IEP Circles. Again, that's Parents United for Public Schools will host a virtual statewide meeting called IEP Circles. And this monthly event provides parents and caregivers with tools, resources, and a community to help them navigate their IEPs and 504 processes. So, again, thank you for your time. This does conclude the President's Report. Next, we will have Superintendent Updates and Report.
Thank you, President Jackson. At this time, I would like to actually... At this time, I would like to actually turn things over to Member Autry. There was a presentation that was made during the Instructional Policy Committee, and they are here to present that information at this time on the report card.
Okay. Thank you, Member Autry.
Thank you. I wasn't aware.
Oh, okay. What part?
Am I introducing Ms. Eubright and company for the presentation of the state report card that we are so excited about?
Yes.
High level. Thank you.
Good evening, President Jackson, Board Member Superintendent Outley. Tonight, we are sharing the results of the 2025 State Report Card, providing a high-level overview of our district's performance. And we situate these results in our district's mission, which is to ensure all of our scholars are college, career, and life-ready, as well as our vision that all scholars graduate ready to design their future, and also our cornerstone in our strategic plan. And this data is essential for guiding our strategic decisions and ensuring we continue to meet our goals for student success. And specifically, the goals and measurements on the report card directly align with our district's key performance indicators, or KPIs, for Cornerstone Two, which focuses on these core academic objectives, including increasing kindergarten readiness, improving early grade literacy, boosting our proficiency scores in our English, math tests, and ensuring our students are prepared for college and career. So our objectives this evening are to share where we are as measured on the state report card and how we will continue to use our key district initiatives to ensure student success. So what do the Ohio Report Cards measure? The Ohio Report Card is a comprehensive measure of district performance, and it looks at six key components. The achievement component, which includes our performance on our state tests in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies; progress, which evaluates student growth over time; gap closing, which focuses on closing gaps among specific student groups; early literacy, which looks at our early literacy in our grades K through three; graduation, which assesses our graduation rates, four years and five years, and college, career, workforce, military readiness, how well we prepare our students for life beyond high school. And the components actually receive a star rating. Each of our components are rated from one to five stars. Now, even though each of these components have their own rating, they also are weighted in the overall district rating, and you can see achievement and progress are more heavily weighted in our overall determination. So the overall ratings, again, are presented in a star format. So three stars indicates that we are meeting state standards. Anything above three stars means that we are exceeding the standards, and anything below means that we need support. And the overall rating, although again, each of the components are rated on stars, one to five, our overall rating can actually be in half stars. So you can receive one, one and a half, two, two and a half, and so on. And so here you can see the district's overall rating in each of the specific components as well, and I should point out that from last year to this year, we did improve our rating from 2.5 stars to 3.5 stars. I was waiting on that, so. My neck is moving just fine, everybody. So this is where we are in terms of performance in each of the components. And the rest of this presentation will overview each of the components so that you can see the data behind each of them that led to our overall rating. And so now, I will ask Dr. Twan Dang Nguyen, English Language Arts Learning Specialist, to come and lead us through our achievement component.
Thank you, Dr. Lash. Good evening. So for the achievement component, it's measured by, our achievement component measures how well our students perform on the Ohio State's tests. So we are measured in English Language Arts, Science, Social Studies, and Math. So we earned a rating of two stars. So when we look at the performance index, we are measured, so in our, I'm sorry, in our performance index, each of the level proficiency is weighted, as you can see on the PowerPoint. If a student scored proficient, they earn one point. If they score accomplished, they earn 1.1. And if they score limited, they earn .3 and so forth. So to calculate the performance index, the state totals up all the points that our students earn, they divide it by the total number of points that possible that students can earn, multiplied by 100, and that's how we receive the performance index of 65.8. So you can see that we've made steady increases from the 21-22 school year to our current school year, from 58.7 to 65.8. When you look at the pandemic around 211920, we scored a performance index of 39.2. But now, as you can see in 2425, we are where we're at, which gives us two stars. So when we talk about the four content areas, we have some celebrations. So if you see English Language Arts, we have two columns here to share the district average as well as the state average. For English Language Arts, we improved in Grade Six, Seventh, Eighth, and ELA II, which is measured in 10th grade. We made gains compared to our score last year. For Math, we made gains in every grade level except 5th grade. For Algebra I, we made a 10% increase, and in Geometry, we made a 13% increase compared to last year. For Science Proficiency, we're measured in 5th grade, 8th grade, and Biology. So we made gains in every grade level. Our Science had a new adoption. So usually, when you have a new adoption, you have a little dip, but our teachers and our students, that did not impact the score, we continue to show progress from the previous school year to this current school year. Lastly is Social Studies. We are measured in American Government and US History. So we made over 8% gain for American, I'm sorry, US History, and we made 8% gain in American Government. So we have a lot to celebrate for our four content areas, but we are still not where we need to be. So we will continue to support our teachers, so as they work with our students, so that we hope that we can move towards that rating of three stars.
Thank you, Dr. Molnar.
All right, so let's take a look at the gap closing component. And so again, this component focuses on identifying and addressing achievement among various student groups. And so you can see our percentage and rating of three stars in gap closing for this past year, 2425. And when we delve a little bit deeper and look at detail behind the measures that factor into gap closing, you can see under the possible points column that we either received zero or five, so all or nothing, or the up to nine, meaning one point for each of our subgroups. And so whereas last time we looked at this data, it was preliminary, and now that it is final, we can see that in the gifted performance, in addition to the five points in gifted identification and services, we did receive five points in gifted progress. We can also see, again, chronic absenteeism. We did earn our five points. We reduced our chronic absenteeism by 1.2 percentage points. And pointing out in graduation and mathematics progress, we had six and seven respectively subgroups where we did meet the standards, again, for an overall three stars in gap closing. And now I will ask Keith Lipti Clifford to talk through progress component.
Thank you, Dr. Lash. Get your clackers ready, everybody, because we went from two stars to four stars. So as Dr. Lash mentioned, we went, as a district, right, overall from three and a, from two and a half stars to three and a half stars. How did we go up a whole star? Progress is one of the reasons that happened. Going from two stars to four stars helped us with our overall component. If you're not sure what progress is, it is a very sophisticated, value-added calculation. So if achievement, what Dr. Dang Nguyen presented, is a snapshot of what students know in the moment on the state standards, progress is how much growth kids show over time, looking at multiple years of tests and projecting where they're expected to be. Now, I think of it kind of like a race. So you're making more progress if you're outpacing the other little third graders or fourth graders in your race, and that's exactly what we did. So I'm proud to say that when we unpack our progress, that we showed some great gains in our gifted ELA in Math, they received three stars. In Science and Social Studies, our gifted students received five stars. It is also noteworthy that our special ed students received four stars in Math and five stars in Science. So lots to celebrate with our gifted subgroup. Now, let me unpack that measure a little bit more. We actually, under the hood, have two years of value-added celebration. So if you see in that last column, our value-added measure is made up of three years' worth of data. So in 2025, that's worth most of our points. So this year, we actually received four stars overall in value-added. In 2024, we actually received a one-year rating of three stars, meaning we met state expectations last year. And then in 2023, we had two stars. So when you roll up, four stars, three stars, two stars, that gave us an overall four stars. So very excited about that one. One more round of applause, please. The next progress moment, measure is early literacy. You know from sitting on the board, we have done so much around structured literacy, the science of reading. We really pour our heart and soul into our early learning program. Now, we did not receive the marks that we wanted on this measure, but the work continues, and you'll hear about that at the end of the presentation. So you can see, over time, we have four years listed. We had one star back in 2122, slowly making some gains in that measure. We hit two stars last year, and then we just fell a little bit. If you notice the chart in the upper right-hand corner, it takes a 58% to hit two stars. We were at 57.9. If we could have moved one more student, we probably would have made that measure. So we will continue to work on that. Now, this is also a pretty sophisticated calculation. There's actually three indicators that roll up into the early literacy. So we have our third grade proficiency is a measure. Now, this was a little tougher hurdle this year because the bar keeps raising. We used to get credit for getting kids close to proficiency. That's no longer the case. So I suspect that's partly why you saw that go down. You have to be proficient or above. So we dipped a little bit to 46.1. That's 40% of our weight. Promotion to 4th grade, we do a great job with our summer programming, giving kids extra opportunities to show that they're ready for 4th grade, so that's 35% of the weight. And the last one is improving literacy, and this is how we show improvement in those pre-tested grades. So you're familiar with I-ready. We talk about those I-ready scores a lot. So that looks at how kids perform from one fall measurement to the next. So any student who's off-track in reading in one grade level, when they come back the next year, like right now, we're doing those I-ready tests, any student that moves from off-track to on-track, we get credit for, and that is what you're seeing there. And we've been pretty flat around 19, 20%, and that's worth 25% of our score. So next, I would like to call up Ms. Marcy Eubright to talk about our graduation rates.
Thank you.
Okay, so of course, graduation. Nothing's changed since we presented instructional policy, except just want to talk about it again, but the graduation rate, you know, we're sitting at two scores that you look at here. 60% of this weight comes from the class of 2024, and 40% comes from the class of 2023. This one always lags a year behind. So the most recent graduating class, the class of 2025, we see their data on next year's report card. And the state very wisely says some kids need an extra year to finish, so every district in the state gets the opportunity of an extra year to get those students across the stage. So we are looking right now at the two-star component weight, which is, we're seeing that grow and grow and grow at 88.9%, which means we are super-duper close. We can almost see that 90% on the horizon, which will be amazing when it happens. So we're doing great here with graduation. We, if you've seen some of the news, we are looking at being, we are the largest graduation rate in the state of Ohio for our large urbons. There's some trend data here to look at and see how we have improved over time and how those numbers are trending up. I did have some, you know, sort of, we have sort of an idea of how the class of 2025 has done, and I would not be surprised if we don't see a three-star rating come next year. So we're looking really positive with how the numbers are turning out there as well. And finally, the CCWMR College Career Workforce and Military Readiness Indicator was a new indicator that districts and high schools across the state were rated on. It has been coming for the last several years. They did away with the old Prepared for Success, which was heavily focused on college credits, ACT, SAT, and the state said kids get prepared for success in a variety of fashions. There's 11 readiness elements that they look for, and I've given you a copy of those readiness elements with the updated data on it at your tables. But you can see that we've been able to watch, even though it was not something that we were rated on, it was able to give us some early indicators around how our students were performing, gave districts a chance to get their data, you know, strategies and systems and structures in place, and supports that students would need to be successful. So first time out of the gate, we hit an 81.5% or a four-star on this rating, which was fantastic. Sometimes, you know, we throw these numbers at you, but I wanted you to have a little bit of comparison about what that means. So there's 606 districts in the state of Ohio. That 81.5% placed us 93 highest. So that means we're in the top 16% of districts in the state of Ohio for this measure. There were two other districts that scored 81.5%, but I put us at space 93 because we're Akron, we were alphabetically first. So anyway, that's how I came up with that. So we're doing really well. We knew this was a measure that we could hit out of the gate with the work that we do for students to get them ready with all of the elements that were there. So thank you very much. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Lash. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
And so I would be remiss if we didn't first give a huge shout-out to our teachers and our administrators who are leading this work in our buildings. Let's give them a round of applause. In schools, we like to say that this building supports the principals, and the principals support the teachers, and the teachers support our students. And so as we move forward, we are certainly excited about these three and a half stars as a district, but as Kobe said, we're not done. We still have more work to do, and we're committed to that work. And so some of the initiatives that we believe are going to move us up to the next rating are to implement fully our multi-tiered systems of support. We have a lot of core instructional strategies that we're implementing, both ELA and in Math, and we have some de-escalation training that we're implementing district-wise. It's one of our big pushes for these first two Professional Improvement Days. Elementary and Science, Elementary Science and Social Studies Achievement, we've made some changes with how we're rolling that out this year. Shout-out to our Social Studies and our Science Learning Specialists. And we're committed to continuing growth for our partnerships and work-based learning on our report card. So super excited about this, but we know we have more work to do, and we're excited to get that work done. I think at this time, maybe questions? I think at this time, there's maybe questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, so, here again, you can see our districts' rating in each of the specific components. And once again, from last year to this year, we improved our star rating from 2.5 stars to 3.5 stars. And as some, conversation has already happened to allude to this, we thought we would also share with you, when we look at our Ohio's eight large urban school districts across each of the components, how Akron stacks up. And so, you can see across the components, Akron is leading the way. And I do want to point out, for early literacy, again, as Mr. Lipti Clifford mentioned, that we were just a tenth of a point away from two stars in early literacy. And in graduation, although there are three districts with two stars there, I want to point out that Akron Public Schools is number one with 88.9%, and then the next highest is 86.4%. So again, as Mr. Johnson stated, we are definitely proud of the work, but we know it doesn't end there, and we look forward to the challenge. And so, in this presentation, we have discussed our report card data, as well as our district initiatives that we will, we believe will get us to where we are going next. And with that, again, thanks to our staff throughout the district, to our families who partner with us every day, and to this Board of Education for your support, as well as the awesome leadership of our superintendent, Mary Outley. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lash. Are there any board member questions resulting from the presentation? All right, thank you. Seeing none.
We just want to let you know that in front of you, from our committee, is a few tokens of thanks. So the flowers came from Let's Grow Akron, which represents the community that is willing to grow with us. And again, the, what do you call it? I can't talk today.
Well, thank you, Let's Grow Akron. We appreciate it. They are beautiful. Thank you, Ms. Alasa. I want to know how much something like this costs, too, just on a side note, in case I want to host something. Because I love how it looks, so that's a side note. Thank you. Thank you all for the wonderful presentation. Superintendent?
Thank you.
Ms. Alasa, we're...
And if you could enjoy the cupcakes, because that's the sweetness of our children.
Thank you, Dr. Alasa.
Good evening, board members. I would like to take a moment just to update you on two urgent federal funding issues that directly affect Akron Public Schools students, staff, and families. First is the proposed federal budget cuts. The House has advanced a bill that would cut U.S. Department of Education funding by 15%. For Akron, that means more than $7 million lost. We're talking about our Title I, Title II, A, 3A, and 4A would all face reductions. These funds support teacher training, academic programs, English learners, student well-being, and enrichment. And losing these funds would be hurtful to our classroom, to our after-school programs, and the work that we have been doing that you just heard about, where we're closing achievement gaps. And these dollars do not serve APS alone. Title funding also supports parochial and private school students across Akron and surrounding communities. Cuts at this level would take resources away from children in every type of school in our city. Let me repeat that more than $7 million will be lost right here in APS alone. Second is our Gear Up Grant. On September 12th, we were told AIM High Gear Up will not continue past year four. This is a seven-year grant that we were awarded and carefully planned for. We had just seven days to submit an appeal, and we did. If that appeal is not successful, we will lose $1.2 million this year and $3.6 million in total. Seven APS staff positions and partner roles would be cut, including those with our lead partner, Project Grad Akron. More than 1,500 sophomores and juniors would lose mentoring, advising, and college and career readiness support that our trusted partners provide. These students are at a critical point in their lives. Many are in their first to go to college. They're the first in their families who even considered college. They began this program when they were in sixth grade, and now at a crucial point. When they are ready to access things for which they are preparing for, the support will no longer be available. So this is the charge. We are asking our community, our staff, and families to contact their representatives, senators, to oppose the cuts, and to ask for continuation of our federal dollars, including our currently at-risk Gear Up Grant. We are compiling a team under the direction of Yvonne Culver and Keith Lipti Clifford to coordinate these efforts. At this time, I would like for Ms. Kaver to come forth very quickly to...
Culver. Ms. Kaver.
Oh, did I call her?
Yes.
Did I call you Kaver? Flashback. I'm sorry. Yvonne Culver.
Madam Superintendent, Madam, Dr. Board President, and Board Members, thank you so much. Dr. Mullenar, Mrs. Autry, we are so happy that you have done that federal advocacy training, because we can put that to, to good use immediately. As Mrs. Outley was saying, we are, we were about to enter year five of a seven-year grant. Our students started in sixth grade, and now, looking at them in, as juniors and seniors, and actually starting to put into those practices the, the things that we have been planning with them, we had literally seven days to write an appeal, which was submitted, and we will find out how that is accepted by September 30th. The grant would end on October 1st. So people would have about a two-week notice as to whether or not they, they had their jobs from the 12th through that 30th. The other thing with that is those services would be immediately pulled from the schools. So those students that have built those relationships with those mentors, the, the groups, the, the things that we have planning, have planned with them, they would all be immediately eliminated because we do not have the funding to continue. We were told by the INSEP, which is the advocacy group at the national level, that the appeals that were received were the appeals in which there was community support. They said the letters are not going to get us there. And, and I need to mention that our grant was non-continued based on components of the grant that were required five years ago to address DEI, but are no longer in alliance with, or no longer aligning with the opportunities or with the, the position of the current government. So five years ago, we were awarded the grant based on what you asked, and now it's being pulled based on what was in the grant that was written five years ago. I can tell you what it feels like from an administrative level, but I think what we really need to focus on are what the kids are feeling and what the kids are seeing. So our students took it upon themselves to create a video, and I'd like to share some part of that video. We have more, if you would like more, if you would need to take that to your communities and to your networks. This is what our students are saying that they would lose and why this is important to them.
We could table the video, and we can let the board see it a little later. President Jackson, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. Next, we will have the Treasurer's Report. And just one moment, if they could email, the video can be emailed to the board, because then that would make it easier probably for the board to send it out to their various networks and constituency, and maybe place it somewhere on our, the district website for those who are watching who may want to view it. Just, I want to put that, thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Bowers, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that the board approve the Permanent Appropriations Resolution for fiscal year '26. This is in accordance with Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Hall. Any discussions? Seeing, hearing none. Mr. Bowers, roll call, please.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Mullenar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7-0. We're also going to go through the August financial report. This is going to represent two months of our fiscal year so far. So so far this year, you can see in the first set of tiles there, the blue represents our revenue so far this year. We are up $18.4 million. Our expenses are down $6.5 million, which is netting a $7.6 million cash benefit for In Section 2, second group of tiles, is comparing the first two months of the year of actual data plus 10 months of projected data. It's current pace we're on, where we are seeing an $8.2 million increase to our cash balance. Our revenue is trending $6.3 million up. Our expenditures are down $1.8 million, and it's netting that $8.2 million. And this all sounds great, I know, but just keep in mind, this is only two months in, so we're 60 days in, things do level out. On the bottom there, the, the third section, we have a graph with gray and blue bars. The, the gray and blue bar chart at the bottom details the ups and downs of our general fund cash balance. Over the course of two years, the gray bar is last fiscal year, the blue bar is this fiscal year. This is two months of actual data and 10 months of projected. You can see that our June 30th actual cash balance last year was $89.1 million. We're estimating it to be $89.4 million this year, but again, this is just early on. We're projecting 10 months, and it's all based on these, this great couple of months we've had so far. Going into the revenue detail, you can see here that at the top, we're comparing our August revenue of this year to August revenue from last year, and our current revenue is up for the month, for the month of August, the revenue is up $11.4 million. Most of that is attributable to our new levy, which yielded us $11.1 million more in revenue this month. In Section 2, we're looking at the first two months' revenue of the year compared to each other. At this current pace, the revenue is trending up $6.3 million, which, I'm in the wrong spot, I'm sorry. No, I'm correct. I apologize. At this current pace, since revenue is trending up $6.3 million and expenditures are trending down $1.9 million, this would yield an additional $8.2 million in cash at the end of the school On the expenditure side, here we're comparing our general fund expenses from August of '25 to August of '26. Salaries and benefits are slightly down at 0.5%, or $416,000 lower than last August, with no significant variances noted. In purchased services, our expenses were down 29% this month, at about $572,000 when compared to last August. That decrease was spread evenly amongst the nine categories that make up that category. Our biggest variance in all other expenditures, which is down $3.2 million, in August of this year, we spent $2.8 million less on buildings, equipment, and vehicles, and 642 less on textbooks than last August. In the second section on this page, looking at our total expenses so far this school year, through two months, we are down $964,000 or 1.1% in salaries and benefits. And this is comprised of 1.1 less in salaries and an increase of $172,000 in benefits. This is due to a combination of both open positions and reductions in staff. We're up 17, we are up 17% or $707,000 so far this year in purchased services, primarily from an early insurance premium. Expenses are almost down $6.3 this year, $6.5 million this year. Expenses are almost $6.3 million down in all other expenses this year. Because so far this year, we have not spent the same $3.5 million on textbooks that we did last fall. And our buildings, equipment, and vehicles have been about $2.9 million less so far On Page 6, we're tying all of this together with our five-year forecast projections. Here we compare two months of actual plus 10 months' projections to the May five-year forecast. Through two months, our revenue is trending favorably by $6.3 million, which is about 1.68% of our total $477 million we're forecasting to receive this year. On the expenditure side, we're also trending favorably at about $1.9 million less than forecasts, that are 0.5% of our total $487 million. Down in the bottom left, you can see, sorry, bottom right, you can see that our expenses are down across all categories except non-utility property services. Here's the last page of our monthly financial report, and this is our bank reconciliation. This reconciliation represents all of our fund accounting. On the left-hand side are the book balances, and on the right-hand side are our bank balances. We perform this reconciliation every month as an internal control to ensure the accuracy and completeness of our financial statements. Includes our monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Are there any questions from members of the board concerning the finance report? Yes, Vice President Alexander?
Yes. Mr. Bowers, do you anticipate that the expenditures that we've had thus far and, and the future will go up, or we think they'll probably stay steady?
I think that they'll even out. So far this year, we've seen it trend lower. I think it could be timing. We have 10 months more of this school year to, for that to, to vet itself.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions from Board members? Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
Thank you. I have the forecast next too, so I guess I need to do their roll call.
Mr. Bowers is just adjusting to his new position, but we are thankful for him. I like hard numbers more than narrative, so I appreciate when you report out, so thank you.
So, motion to approve the finance report?
Second.
Wait, no, is there a motion? So he wants to approve for the finance report. Is there a motion to approve the finance report as presented?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Vice President Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers.
They've put up the, these are the details. I need the PowerPoint. Here we go. Okay, so today, we're going to go over the, the fall submission of the five-year forecast. We're here forty-five days earlier than last year. Up until this year, it's been due by November thirtieth of each year. This year, according to House Bill ninety-six, they moved up the deadline forty-five days, so here we are. We have to have this approved before October fifteenth. Next fall, it will be due by August twenty-eighth, so we'll be even earlier. We'll have less time to get it all figured out. There's also going to be a change to this forecast and its structure. Up until now, it's had one year of actual data and four years of projected. Next year, they're having us change it to one year of actual and three years of forecasted, and they're not sure what they're going to call it. And I have a bad accounting joke right now. I'm saying to call it the forecast because there's four years. Maybe that'll catch on. So we'll get started with it. So here is our current fiscal year. Total revenue expenditures and, and projected deficit for the year. See, we're going to receive three hundred and seventy-seven million, spend about three hundred and eighty-seven million, and we're projecting that that will be a negative ten point four million dollar deficit for the year. Here's how our revenue is broken down. Fifty-five percent of that, or a hundred and fifty-five million, comes from local taxes. Forty-one percent, I'm sorry, that's state-funded. Forty-one percent of that, I got this, so state funding is fifty-five percent, or two hundred and six million dollars. Local taxes is a hundred and fifty-five million at forty-one percent. All other revenue comes in at about fourteen point eight million. Here's our expenditure breakdown for the year. Forecasted eighty-one percent, or three hundred and fifteen point five million, will be spent on salaries and benefits, with forty-two point nine percent spent on purchased services, and twenty-nine million spent on all other expenditures, which is supplies and capital and debt. But this bar chart on the left is comparing our projected revenue versus expenditures for the next five years. Revenue is in blue and expenditures are in orange, and you can see that our expenses are far outpacing our revenue. And on the right-hand side, we're showing that our projected cash balance is decreasing rapidly. So when we hit twenty twenty-eight, we're going to be in deficit spending. So over the next three years, we forecast that expenses will exceed revenue by almost forty-five million dollars, resulting in a thirteen point three million dollar cash deficit at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And over the next five years, we're expecting to overspend by one hundred and sixty million dollars for a net deficit of eighty-one million dollars, eighty-one point seven million at June thirty, thirtieth. Here we're looking at the annual historic change in revenue. On the left-hand side, you can see that it has increased by one point five two percent over the last five years. We're projecting that that will, that will only go up about point one two percent over the next four years. On the right-hand side is the same thing in expenses. Over the past five years, we've seen expenses increase about five point three four percent, but we're projecting that they'll only go up three point three percent over the next four years. Here is a graph of our days' cash on hand. You can see back in twenty twenty-two, we had a hundred and twenty days' worth of cash on hand. This school year, we're projected to end the year with seventy-four, twenty-seven next year, and then we're in the red in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Our Board policy is that we maintain sixty days of cash on hand. Here is enrollment. It's decreasing by about one percent a year. It has been, that's been the trend, about two hundred and eighteen scholars, so we're expecting that to continue. On the flip side, our general fund pupil, per pupil expenditure is increasing. This year, we're spending about twenty thousand, we expect to spend about twenty thousand five eighty-eight per student. Here is our daily cost to educate a scholar, about a hundred and fourteen dollars a day. So if you take that twenty thousand five eighty-eight and divide it by an a hundred and eighty-day school year, you get that one fourteen. Twenty-three percent of that comes from local property tax. Seventy-seven percent of that is paid for by all other revenues, so state, federal funding. When compared to the May forecast, we can see that we're projecting a four hundred and forty-four thousand dollar revenue decline, and we're expecting our increases to increase, our expenses to increase by about one point nine million or point five percent. So in conclusion, on the current path the district is on, we'll be facing some serious financial difficulty in the twenty twenty-eight school year. It isn't too late to make decisions that will positively influence this path, and I recommend that we start doing that now, because the sooner we do that, the better off we'll be, the sooner we can get things back on course. Are there any questions on the five-year forecasts?
Any questions from Board members? I have a question. When you say that your recommendation is that we start to make some decisions now that can impact how we look future forward with this, what are some of those suggestions?
We need to look at our footprint, possibly the number of students in class. We're over, we're looking through every purchase service contract right now. Mary and I are looking at anything we can, we're, we're, all the ideas there are that revolve around how to reduce costs. Overtime has already been looked at, and it's, it's helping, but we need to keep looking and figure out where, where we can make some gains. We do have that performance audit coming, so we, I sent back the scope to them. She said they'd have that back to us this week sometime, so that will start, and they will help us look at things from a third-party point of view, and maybe give us some ideas that we're not thinking of yet, so that could be helpful.
Okay. Thank you. So, our footprint, per pupils in the classroom, how many students are in the class, some of our expenditures, we're already looking at overtime, which is significant, and then our performance audit, which this Board discussed in our last meeting, will help us as far as getting into the weeds of where we can make some cuts, correct?
Correct. They will, they will take a comprehensive look at all of our policies and procedures and let us know where they think that we can make some cuts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Member Sykes?
Yeah. Madam President, thank you, and members of the Board. The Finance Committee has reviewed all of these areas with our Treasurer, the Permanent Budget, the monthly finance report, the five-year forecast, and as you may remember, that with the five-year forecast, that we started this year, last year, looking at the cuts that we have to make. And the Superintendent is working, of course, to look at making those cuts as we go. So as the Treasurer said in twenty twenty-eight, that if we don't do some of these things, that we will find ourselves in a situation, but we are doing some of these things. Also, we want to note that as far as the health benefits, that we are seeing a reduction in the health benefits that is provided. We think we're providing the employees with better benefits, better services, but with a reduction at the same time. I will also say that one of the big reductions that we were, one of the big expenses will be the building of the two schools. The building of Kenmore, Pfeiffer, and North High School. So we want to make sure, you know, we have a meeting tomorrow in Kenmore, and we have done the business that we need, taking care of the business that we need to, and making those necessary reductions, as well as looking at the money from the,
CLC.
CLCs. And so we want to continue to stay in contact with the city on where we are with that, the understanding with that. As you know, that we did, when we passed the last resolution dealing with our two schools, with Pfeiffer and Kenmore, that we did declare that it would be a community learning center, and therefore, that monies should come to Akron Public Schools as it relates to the LFI's. So that, we are waiting to see if there's any penalty as it relates to arbitrage. We do not think that we'll be in a significant penalties. So we're looking at about seventeen million. It's the amount I believe that's there now, but we're not sure. But in any case, we have, have budgeted that, and we will be able to meet those, those goals with the LFI monies and dealing with our schools, and we want to stay on top of what's happening at North High School. I believe that we're doing that. So we are thinking ahead, we are looking ahead, we are making those very difficult cuts each year. The Superintendent and her staff working on that, she on a daily basis, and the Finance Committee is constantly looking at that and what's happening with that. But these, these are tough times, and of course, we just heard about the cuts that's coming most likely from the federal government that's going to mean even more difficult for us. But in working with the, with our Treasurer, with our Superintendent, I think that we will, I don't think we're going to have any big surprises. So when twenty twenty-eight arrives, it means that we will have to have made some very, very difficult decisions in cuts and staff and buildings and other areas expenditures. But we are working on that, and I think that we're going to make it, but it's going to mean all of us really making the sacrifices that's necessary in order to do what we have to do. Just wanted to make those, those come in.
Thank you, Member Sykes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowers. All right. Is there a motion to approve the five-year forecast as presented by Treasurer Bowers?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Sykes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, is the approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the regular Board meeting minutes for September eighth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second? It's the Board meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Roll call please, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Alexander?
Abstained, I was absent.
Ms. Autry?
Abstained.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Abstained, I was absent.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Motion carries, four, zero, with three abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, is there a motion to approve the emergency Board meeting minutes for September fifteenth of twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second by Member Autry. Any discussion?
Correction.
Correction. Member Harrison?
I have a couple corrections to this, these minutes. In three-one, it states that I moved to terminate the administrative contract. That wasn't, the resolution was presented by the administration. I didn't, I didn't move that.
Okay, so, for the sake of discussion, you moved, because it was no, it was quieted, and for the sake of discussion, you moved, you moved it.
I seconded.
You seconded, I'm sorry. You moved, and, I'm sorry, Mr., Vice President Alexander moved, and then it was, for the sake of discussion, Mr. Harrison seconded, so that's how the minutes should read.
Yeah, I seconded.
And the minutes reads that you moved it, so point of correction?
Yes.
For the minutes. So let the minutes reflect that. Member Harrison, in fact, seconded, he did not move, originally moved the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Member Harrison?
And I think the, in the body of three-one, it should read "Stated, not thought." I thought something. I think it, I stated it. I think it should be just clear, I stated it and not, it was a thought.
All right. So the correction of, it stated, it, as it's listed now, it's his thought, and so you wanted to be corrected, that you wanted to say "stated." Thank you. Let the record reflect the correction. All right. Thank you, Member Harrison. All right, so it's been moved, point of correction made. After it was seconded, that was the point of correction, so, Mr. Bowers, you may call for the vote.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, we'll have the personnel recommendations from our Superintendent, Ms. Autry.
Thank you, President Jackson. Does the Board have any questions about the personnel items for Section Ten, professional staff and administrators?
Member Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, on ten point two, the resignation of Stephen Keenan, we have not, of course, we received the resignation letter. That's attached in the agenda. I just want to- I, I just want to, for the sake of clarification before the vote, make sure that there is nothing contingent upon his resignation. We have not agreed to not do anything, that this is, this is a resignation with no stipulations.
As I, um, our council is here, but as I understand it, the information which is provided is what the board is abreast to, which does not include us being made abreast of any specific stipulation. So for clarity, Mr., Mr. Harrison has stood to just be assured that there's no additional stipulations. So yes, David, could you come to the mic, our general counsel?
President Jackson, members of the board, thank you, Mr. Harrison, member Harrison. That is the letter that the district received. There are no other conditions attached or indicated in that letter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from personnel? Yes, member Sykes.
Thank you, ma'am, President Jackson and members of the board. It's just in reading the resolution, it indicates that once we take this action, that it moots the action that we took last time. And just for the legislative language, rather than using moot, I would suggest that it says that we appealed the...
Appealed or repealed?
That, that we repeal, repealed.
Repealed, okay.
Thank you, Madam President. We repeal as opposed to that we moot, that it's mooted, because as a legislative body, everything that we do is, is still, is, is there. And so if we want to change it, then we need to repeal it as opposed to saying it's just moot. So I would make that, if we can make that change, somewhere it says that as a, as a result of the resignation, the board prior notice of intent to terminate employment issue on, on September fifteenth is now repealed.
Understood. Okay. So let the record reflect that, um, with the motion goes, when the motion is read, to approve this resolution, it's with the correction, understanding, and the record reflects the correction, that moot is replaced with repealed.
Yes. Thank you. And thank you, Madam President. And then one last amendment that I would have to, item number ten point two, resignation, that the interim treasurer shall refer Stephen Keenan investigation report to the Akron Chief of Police, to the Akron City Prosecutor, to the State Auditor, to the Ohio Ethics Commission, and the IRS for further investigations. I asked for this amendment because, as we've heard, this school system is very busy in trying to teach our children and trying to do the day-to-day work. However, I think from the report that we, we received, that there is a need to say to the community that once we do this, that there are actions that need, additional actions that need to take place in order to assure that we are safeguarding taxpayers' monies. I ask that we send it to the Akron Chief of Police to see if there is any further investigations that need to take place. I can appreciate that the attorneys did do some investigation, but that is not the primary responsibilities of attorneys to investigate this and to take a look at it to see if there is any other area of concern that we should have here at the Akron School Board. To send it to the Akron City Prosecutor so that they can provide some additional advice to the Chief of Police and their investigators to determine if in fact there are any charges, what charges should be brought towards any individuals or individuals as it relates to this. To our State Auditor, we have already asked for a performance audit, and with that performance audit, we want to know internally, within our system, if there, where those weak spots, spots lie, and to make sure that we are constantly focusing in on areas of weakness that will cause an individual to take advantage of our system, to the Ohio Ethics Commission, because we have entrusted, we have entrusted a great deal of responsibility to individuals, and we have paid them, and we are paying them fair value salaries. And the thought of someone taking advantage of this system, we, and not taking care of this system in an ethical way is very disheartening, very disappointing. And the Ohio Ethics Commission should take a look at this. And the Ohio Ethics Commission, in taking a look at this, can also refer for prosecution. And then finally, an individual, or individuals who would take advantage of this system in such a way that after paying them a fair market value for the work that they do, that they will still make money off of this system and not pay their taxes on it, is still very, extremely disheartening. I said today, as I said before, and I say this because of the information that we received from the investigation, that there are other individuals involved in this. And what we need to do is not only know if there's other individuals involved, if there's other departments involved in this process. I think we have a responsibility to the citizens here, to the taxpayers, to make sure that they know that we're doing everything that we can to protect their monies, because everything that's here is here because of the taxpayers' monies. And we hear all of the time, and we know it. It is not easy paying taxes. It is not easy supporting levies. It is not easy coming out of their pockets to do the things that we asked them to do, but they keep doing it, day in and day out. They keep supporting the system with their monies that they would much rather keep in their own pockets, in their own household, but they give it to us. And we have a responsibility to safeguard their funds. Therefore, I am asking you to support this amendment whereby the interim treasurer shall refer Stephen Keenan investigation report to the Akron Chief of Police, the Akron City Prosecutor, the State Auditor, the Ohio Ethics Commission, and the, and the IRS for further investigation.
Thank you, member Sykes. So the amendment was read concerning the resolution from member Sykes. I do know that recommendations have been made, and this was discussed already amongst the board with general counsel, in the understanding that this was how we were going to proceed. But I guess the amendment makes it so the public understands clear as well. So that, as it's read, as member Sykes has just read it, that is just the amendment added for public purposes?
Second.
Is everyone clear? Thank you. Okay. The amendment to the resolution was moved by member Sykes and seconded by member Harrison. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call please. Oh, that was it for, I think there was no other questions. I'm sorry, Ms. Sykes. Okay, roll call please. Thank you.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Autry?
Yes.
Seven zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
So that was for the amendment, so now we need the motion.
Motion to approve. If there's no other questions, is there a motion to approve personnel recommendations presented in categories ten through twenty?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Hall. Any discussion?
Second.
Member Sykes?
Yes, Madam President. So what, so we, that was just a vote on the amendment. Now we need to vote on the, uh, his...
Resignation.
His, uh, resignation with the amendment.
So I have, Ms. Hall, motioned, and Alexander seconded?
Yes.
So we just voted on ten point two, re, correction.
With the amendment.
Now we're voting to approve it, correct?
Yeah, we have voted to approve the amend, we voted to approve the resolution with the amendment.
And now we're going to...
With the said amendment.
Now we're going to actually approve it.
I'm sorry?
Good. So, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I think, because his, his, the resolution is in, within these personnel recommendations, right, of ten through twenty. Isn't that correct? And so we made the motion to approve, we already accepted the amendment, and so now we're making a motion to approve the personnel recommendations in categories ten through twenty with the accepted amendments, which we've already accepted. So the motion, as I read, would have been the proper motion, because we've accepted the amendments already to the resolution. So to approve, as I read, it was proper, and all we needed to do was vote on it, because we already approved the amendment to the resolution, which is part of ten, section ten through twenty.
Okay.
Yeah, so you can call for it. So we're voting.
Okay. Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, member, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, we have, um, is the division recommendations. Superintendent Autley?
Thank you. Does the board have any questions about the division recommendations, resolutions, and motions for Section twenty-two?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just want to highlight the resolution at twenty-two, three, the GAR Foundation Grant Award for twenty thousand dollars. They have been, well, they continue to be our partners in a lot of things. So just want to kind of highlight, anytime we see twenty thousand dollars and we hear about the cuts in our schools, we want to acknowledge those community partners that are continuing to partner with our schools. So just want to say thank you to the GAR Foundation for the twenty thousand dollar award and twenty-two point three.
Thank you, member Harrison. Oh, it's a clap, huh? And it's for Project Rise, which we know is one of our most marginalized populations. All right, thank you.
I wish to recommend the approval of the division recommendations, resolutions, and motions in Section twenty-two.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the division recommendations and resolutions, resolutions and motions in category twenty-two?
So moved.
It's been moved by member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by member Autry. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Reverend Harrison?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next is our business affairs recommendation, Superintendent Autley.
Does the board have any questions for Section twenty-three, Business Affairs Recommendations?
Member Hall?
Not really any questions, but it is homecoming time, so just looking at all of this and paying for DJs and things like that is, um, making, this year is just going really, really fast. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, member Hall. Member Molinar?
Thank you, Madam President. Looking at twenty-three, eight, I just wanted to point out, I think this would be a really great opportunity, maybe in Instructional Policy Committee, maybe in the Student Success Committee. You know, I, I love seeing and hearing what our students are doing in the classroom, so if the students are working on things. The, the presentations today, I would have loved to seen the students' full presentations. I only got to speak to a couple in the hallway, so the Student Success Committee would have been a really good opportunity for us to really highlight them, and so I'm trying to say proactively twenty-three, eight might be good for Instructional Policy or Student
Are there any other questions or discussions? All right.
I wish to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in category twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Business Affairs Recommendation in category twenty-three?
I'm moved to approve the Business Affairs Recommendations.
It's been moved by member Autry. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by member Hall. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
Abstained on twenty-three, five, yes, on the balance.
Mrs. Sykes?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison? Motion carries on twenty-three point five, six to one, seven zero on the balance.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Next, Superintendent?
President Jackson and members of the board, this evening, you have granted permission for me to hire Chase Canfield, who will be the Executive Director for our Human Resource Department. He was not able to be here this evening, but he will be present at the October eighth board meeting. You also approved the hiring of Dr. Wanda Lash as the Assistant Superintendent, and Dr. Lash is here, if she would like to stand and represent.
Uh, Dr. Lash, would you mind, I know you said many words already today, but not in your official capacity.
Oh goodness, good evening again, and as my husband learned at a city event, you don't give an educator a microphone, because we have plenty to say and talk about, but thank you for the opportunity, President, Dr. Jackson. Just thank you to the board, very excited. It's, my neck, my staff is back there, who's here to support me, and they've laughed at me all day for a stiff neck, but feel like it hasn't started yet, but I'm ready to strap in, put a neck brace on, and let's just figure it out and make it happen. And so, again, thank you. I look forward to serving this district. It is my home, and it has become my heart since I've been here. And so very grateful to Superintendent Autley to learn from her leadership and support her as we move this district. And thank you to all of my colleagues. Look forward to serving you as we serve each other in, again, moving this district forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lash, and congratulations. Thank you for that, Superintendent. Next, we'll move forward with our committee reports. We have legal contracts and board policy. Vice President Alexander, please give us an update.
Thank you, Madam President. The, or legal committee met on September the fifteenth with a full agenda. We want to thank David, our counselor, who ran this first meeting, and thank him for guiding us through the, the meeting. During the meeting, we discussed several policies. Those policies was the audit policy, the student abuse and neglect policy, release time of, release time for religious instruction, policy and promotion, academic acceleration, placement, and retention policies. All these policies needed to be, they're part of House Bill ninety-six, and they need to be in place by September the thirtieth so we can meet compliance. We're also going to have tonight on our agenda, the, for third and final reading, the Parent Bill of Rights policy as well. And during our, our meeting, the last meeting, we discussed a couple other things, but we're going to move forward with some other policies that we stated we wanted to look at, and those are the prehumorous and honorary diploma, procurement, federal grants and funds, vendor relations, public complaints, nepotism, and independent contract operations and services, which is the IOC. which is the IOC. But for tonight, we are asking for a third and final reading for the following policies so we're clear. Those policies are policy 5223, release time for religious instruction during the school day, policy 5410, promotion, academic acceleration, placement, and retention, policy 5781.01, Parent Bill of Rights, policy 6830, audit, and policy 8462, student abuse and neglect. We are asking for a third and final reading for these policies. Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry. And our next meeting will be October the 27th here in this room at 5:30. October 27th, next- it's just next month in this room we're in. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Vice President Alexander. Is there a motion to waive the second reading?
Yes, we're waiving, and we're having a third and final reading for all the policies that were read.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear. So is there a motion to waive the second reading, accept as the third and final reading, and approve these five policies as presented by the committee? Has to be moved and then go to discussion? Yeah. Okay, it's been moved by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I think if we are going to waive the final reading, we have to do those individually. And there's a question to the first one that I had, but I don't think we can put them all together. The, uh... Release time for religious instruction. I know we had a lot of discussion in that, but it doesn't seem like the language was changed that we discussed Monday.
Uh, thank you, uh... Member Harrison, is there a specific part of the language that you're referencing for context so they can address that directly?
There's a part that's not in here that we discussed. So I know, I don't see the part in here that we discussed with the, um... We talked about what kids are bringing back to- from the release time for religious instructions, what they can bring back to the- with them. Whether it be candy, whether it be instructional materials, the materials that they could bring back with them.
You know, if I remember, and I'll have the David come up, we talked about, I don't think there's anything they can bring back because it's part of religion. And I think that was part of the piece that I was talking about with- between church and state. And so I don't- we'll need to make sure it's clarified.
Uh, yes, that was actually discussed, um... When they came up to discuss the materials that come back, if they could bring them back and have them in their book bag. And so I understand the unreadiness about that, because it was said, well, yeah, they can bring it, if they have the things with them, they can bring it back. They just cannot pass out or shared information. But it was something about that, and I know that Molinar had made a comment about something. I did- I do recognize, I believe your hand was up to say something. Who else was here? I know Dr. Lash was here, and she- I know that they talked about it as well. So I don't know, David, you have something to add? Member Harrison? Or no, I'm sorry, Vice President Alexander mentioned your name. If there's nothing, then to the point of Member Harrison, if no one knows the clarity or the language or what the question is, we might want to get that before moving it forward. But we'll have- David will speak, Mr. Spulzek, I'm sorry, and then Dr. Molinar with your question, why he's still at the podium. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President Jackson. If I understand, Member Harrison, what you're addressing, make sure, if you look at the bottom part of the policy-
Right.
-there's a- would be the third sentence from the bottom. There is specific language that says noneducational or non-program related materials, however, are not permitted to return to school. And again, I'm not sure if that sounds like it's addressing that question that you had.
Yes, that was- the issue is, we had specific, I guess, conversations on what that meant. And so when we're looking at that, it's kind of subjective. And so if we're talking about, you know, we had the conversations with administrative guidelines, so that's the- that's the internal portion. But because this is a policy, kind of given more guidance.
Policies are broad, intentionally broad. So you have the administrative guidelines that you mentioned-
Yeah.
-that can be addressed. But again, candy, I think you mentioned-
Yeah.
-you know, that's a noneducational or non-program related material. So that would not be permitted to be brought back, okay?
Thank you, David. And, um, remember, Molinar had a question, just if you stay there in just in case, you have to address that. Dr. Molinar?
Thank you, yes. And I understand the concept of policies being intentionally broad, but-
Correct.
-it's also important to be specific. And I think there might be some that might argue that candy shaped in a certain way or used in a certain way is educational. As a former math teacher, this time of year, I would use candy corn pumpkins to teach regrouping and things like that. So I have to agree with Member Harrison here that some specificity beyond that would have been helpful. But my actual comment now, because we can continue to do that, is additionally, language that the committee agreed on is also missing from this. And so the language that the committee agreed on at the bottom of page one is about the concept of core curriculum. And so the language that we spoke on at committee and then emailed to Dr. Lash was that the Board recognizes the core curriculum as including, but not limited to, courses aligned with state-approved learning standards, graded courses, and other learning experiences identified as core curriculum under Board policies. That statement was specifically said and emailed-
And I'm looking at that statement right here.
No, that is not what it says. There are similar words, but it is not what I see in the agenda is when I click on release time for- and if that's how it is, if it's just an administrative error, then it's very easy to rectify, and we can just make sure that's what it says. But what I see is the Board deems all graded courses to be, and that is not what was- and that's why I emailed it also, so it would be accurate, specific, and clear. What it said-
Do you want- President Jackson, do you want to check?
No, I've seen-
Yes.
Context, okay.
It's right here. It does contain that, yeah, the copy that I had prepared.
The copy you have, does the sentence start, "the Board deems"?
Correct.
Yes, that is not the statement I sent.
It continued, every word you said, "but not limited to, courses that have state-approved learning standards, graded courses, and other learning experiences identified as core curriculum under Board policies." That is in the copy that I am holding.
I hear you say that you compromised and took some of the words that I used, but what I'm saying is-
The exact words that you just said.
I sent a specific paragraph, a specific- it sent, actually, I think it's one long sentence. And at some point, the Board as the policymakers, that policy language shifted and evolved.
So, um, Miss- Member Chair Alexander and with the members of the committee, so the language that was sent, and you saw the current language-
Right.
-and so as the chair and with the- because I understand, Member Molinar said she sent the language.
Right.
It's- to me, I thought it had the same specific points as far as whatever the Board, who are the policymakers, deemed as, under our purview, that's in there, even though it's not the verbatim language. I'm just asking the chair, because if you saw that and then with the other committee members-
If it's not verbatim, we don't have to have everything verbatim. As long as we have it in there stating that we- what we want. Now here's, and this is a suggestion that we could possibly do, if we want to approve the policy, because it's got to be done by the deadline, then we can approve it and make an amendment if we need to. Or we can- we may have to have a special meeting. Which I don't think we want to do that, so...
Just for a point of clarity, I don't think that this matter would deem a special meeting. I think to what Member Molinar's point is, is, well, and I don't need to speak for Member Molinar, but that email went out with specific language. And so when she checks what she specifically wrote and loo to what was, is now presented before us, it is not a word, it's not verbatim to what was submitted by Member Molinar to Dr. Lash. However, upon reading it, because I understand what she's saying, it's covering the print- there's nothing in it that's neglecting what is being said as I read it. So what I'm going to do is call for the vote, and if it's unreadiness, then people, you can vote it down. So I'm calling for the vote.
Can I give a point of clarification? Because I- we were doing this, and I did not get something back. I do want- I want to offer and the opportunity that if it's all the same to everybody else, can we approve it with that verbatim language that the Board and the Board Committee agreed on, instead of the language that administration thought was close to what the Board and the Board Committee agreed on? So can I- I actually, no, I will now make a motion.
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing. I'm making a motion to, I move that the Board approve this policy contingent upon replacing the language in the agenda with the following committee-approved language, and I will reread it for everyone. The Board recognizes the core curriculum as including, but not limited to, courses aligned with state-approved learning standards, graded courses, and other learning experiences identified as core curriculum under Board policies.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that the Board Chair called for the vote, and so the vote was called. And so, I'm sorry, Mr. Bowers, because the Board Chair called for the vote, the vote should have been ran. And if there's any unreadiness with the language as it is, then the proper thing to do is vote your conscience and vote no. Because of the vote, the call for the vote has proceeded, and so you cannot interrupt with a motion, and you can refer to Roberts rules if that's what you like. But the vote, I called for the vote, and so there should have been no discussion after that, the vote should have proceeded. So, Mr. Bowers, in those, please let the record reflect that the Board Chair called for the vote prior to Member Molinar then trying to call a motion. So please, Mr. Bowers, call, the vote has been called. Could you roll call?
I have the Hall motioned. I don't have a second yet.
In the absence of a second, I make a motion because this is something we do frequently.
I call for the Chair, I call for the vote. I don't need a second.
I will second it. Madam Chair, it's been moved, I will second, so we can have-
A second. Well, it's been seconded by Alexander.
Dr. Molinar?
During- no, because during discussion, I would have made a motion if I would have known that discussion would have been interrupted and taken from me.
Mrs. Sykes?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
No.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Motion carries four three.
Thank you. Next we'll have Finance and Capital Management.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President and members of the committee, the various pieces of the resolutions that you heard from the Finance, from the Treasurer tonight are the same items that we discussed in Finance. In addition to that, it was announced that the Miller Pfeiffer update will be tomorrow at 5:00 at the Kenwood Community Center.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Is there- are there any questions for the Finance Chair? Okay, thank you. Next we'll have Instructional Policy and Student Achievement.
Dr. Jackson, I believe the report was given at the last meeting, that I wasn't here, but it was on a report card, so we didn't receive that today. And thanks again to everyone involved with everything that we achieved on our report card. The next Instructional Policy and Student Achievement meeting will be October the 13th at 4:30.
Thank you, Member Autry. Next we'll hear from Member Hall with instructions referencing the Student Committee.
Thank you, Madam President. For our Student Success, we will have our first meeting on September 29th. During that meeting, we will be swearing in the new Student Board members, which are represented at each high school, as well as welcoming this year Superintendent Advisory Committee. So please come out and support our students, as well as our culinary program, I'm sorry, Ellet High School will be providing refreshments from the culinary program, Ellet High School. Sorry, I'm getting tongue tied. You know, I've heard when we state that we want to let our students showcase their skills and their abilities, and with our College and Career Academies, so I'm excited about Ellet coming in to do the refreshments instead of outside businesses. So please come and support our students at 4:30, September 29th. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Member Hall, I'm sure everyone is excited, as Member Molinar mentioned earlier, for the students to be able to present. And hopefully, once we- since we've approved the 23.8, the American AI Form, once the students utilize that, because that was just approval for them to get the training, we can probably highlight some things that they- some takeaways from getting that training, any programs that they participate in. So thank you. Currently, there is no unfinished business. Is there any new business? All right, seeing none, there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revise Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment, appointment, excuse me, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees or officials. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes, Member Harrison.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, which one of these are we doing? Because I- which one of the items that we listed are we going into an executive session about?
Each that we read, each that was read.
Each one of those?
Yes. As it was read, Miss- Member Harrison.
Okay.
Is there any other question? All right, Mr. Bowers, roll call please.
Mrs. Sykes?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Reverend Harrison?
No.
Dr. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Molinar?
No.
Motion carries four three.
Thank you. We stand in recess for executive session at 7:50 PM. We stand in recess for executive session at 7:50 PM.
We stand back in session at 9:32 from our executive session.